Good morning, and we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Approve. We have additions.
Two deletions.
A second with the changes.
Changes. We have a motion and a second to approve today's agenda with the changes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thanks for a little time this morning. I think Steve shared with you a little bit of information on what brings me here this This is something that really I was first made aware of probably yesterday, so I'm coming into this a little bit late. But the city council did talk about it last night in Barnesville. I guess to step back, I should introduce myself. I'm Mike Greets. I'm the city administrator from Barnesville. And so, the issue here that I wanted to kind of highlight for you is the change in tax status for our daycare center in Barnesville. For many, many years, they have been tax exempt. And then, last year, there was a change made. I'm not exactly sure what the ins and the outs of that change was, but their taxes jumped from just paying some special assessments of about $200 to now it's in the neighborhood of $7,500. And the reason that this is concerning for the city council is that for the last 20 years or so, we have really built our economic development efforts around increasing the amount of housing and bringing families to the community as a way to grow tax base and also as a way to support our school district and continue to bring students into the school district and maintain their viability. So, having quality daycare in the community plays a very big role in all of that. And having our major daycare center, we already struggle to have enough daycare in the community. And so, this is a big blow to them, and it does then provide, as I see it, a fairly significant threat to the community overall in terms of our economic development and our economic viability. So, really, what I'm here to do this morning, as I understand it, the county plays a fairly significant role in determining whether or not a business like this is exempt or non-exempt. And so, to the extent that you have the ability to take a look at this, I would ask that you take a second look at the decision on whether or not this business should be tax exempt or not.
Any questions for Mike? Nancy, do you want to address this issue for us?
I'm not sure how much background you'd like to receive.
I guess I'd like to hear whether, is this a state mandated thing?
No, it is not. It all started back in late of 2017 when the property owner pulled a building permit to do some improvements. And since it was a daycare, I did not enter the structure, so I went back to the office and pulled out some information and tried to get ahold of the party. And so, I sent a letter, and I realized that I wasn't quite sure why this was receiving an exemption. So, I sent out a couple of applications either to be purely exempt or through institutions of purely exempt property. So, that process started in '17. I got the information back from the party, and I went through, we have six criteria that we look at to see if something qualifies, if they're a purely public institution. And I didn't think it met the criteria, so we had several conversations. And I told her that I would submit all the information down to Department of Revenues. They have a charity board that reviews information, and I would take their recommendation based on the information. It was a really slow process. It took all of '18 to get this finalized, and I finally got word back from that board, I believe, in December, I think it was. And then, I made sure that this was taxable, so I took their recommendation. And it was then taxable for the '18 assessment, payable in '19.
I think I had had a conversation with Mike and council members from Barnesville yesterday, but had talked to Representative Marquardt about this in late December. But can you just go to me the change in the valuation again?
Well, there was also a significant change in valuation from 2017 to 2018, which, because they were still under tax exempt status, that change in valuation didn't prompt anyone to come to Board of Review or anything about it. But it went from, I think, $138,000 to, I believe it's now $281,000. And a lot of that has to do, I know property values in the community overall did increase just based on the market, but also, I think, some of the improvements that they used some grant funds through a small cities program that we got and did make some improvements to the building. So, I'm sure that played into it some, but there was a fairly significant jump in value that is also impacting the level of tax that they're paying.
Commissioner, just to hand out, you do have the tax statement on the backside of that for what Mike is talking about.
So, how long have they been tax exempt?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I would say they've been exempt many years.
Since the inception, which I believe was about 30 years ago.
How long?
30 years.
30 years ago. So, in Clay County, are there any other tax exempt daycare facilities?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. I think there is a structure in the city of Morehead that's standalone, and there was also one out in the strip mall in Gilworth that was taxable.
I think the structure of this one, they've always been structured as it was described to me anyway, as a parent co-op. And so, I think that's maybe why that had played into their tax exempt status. And, you know, it sounds like there was a, the answers that they provided on the questionnaire, you know, had they answered those differently or had some additional guidance on how to answer those questions, maybe it wouldn't have changed things. But as I said, I don't have a whole lot of background on it.
Who owns the place?
I believe it's owned by a cooperative.
A private individual? Does it run into date?
I don't believe it's owned by a single individual. I believe it's run by a cooperative with a board. You know, at this point, I'm not entirely certain.
So, Nancy, when the state made this determination that it's not tax exempt?
Right. That was their recommendation, that based on the information.
So, that's a recommendation. Do we have the authority to change that or to make them tax exempt, or is that a state decision we don't have any control over?
It still is up to the assessor to make the call, but I've had several situations where I've sent the information down to this review board, and I've always taken their recommendation.
I'm just trying to get a better understanding. Representative Marquardt had said that they're working on some legislation that could affect this property and others going forward, correct?
I'm not sure. I haven't talked to...
And so, I guess, I mean, it is a big, you know, we all have got our tax statements this year, and we're all dealing with some sort of smaller or larger. And so, I think, you know, to go from paying $200 in taxes to paying $7,500 in taxes is quite a significant jump. And obviously, I think the concern of the city council is that that's going to have to be passed down to parents with smaller kids anyhow. And so, I don't know if there's any way, I don't know if there's anything we can do or if, I don't know, you know, I see that $2,600 of that goes to the city of Barnesville, and then another $1,400, I think, is the state general tax. But I don't know if there's some sort of, you know, either the city gives some sort of relief and/or if we could reduce it at some point. I just don't know based on, I just don't know what we can do. So, I don't know if this board wants to talk about it further.
If we would grant this, we'd have to probably bring a lot of other people in here, wouldn't we?
I'll take one.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I mean, we'd have to probably grant this to a lot of others in childcare.
We'd probably have to research other daycare situations and see what their status is.
I mean, if the state says they're not tax exempt, I mean, I guess you're doing your job.
Well, what are the board's wishes? Want to take any action on this or want more information?
I want to comment. I want to comment on, Mike, your, I certainly agree with the concerns that Barnesville has and with the whole idea of childcare in general. It's something that we struggle with in our communities, and it is something that's really important. The other side of that is, you know, we don't know, you know, every other, every other biz, private company that's in business doesn't have the opportunity to not pay real estate taxes, you know? So, that's the dilemma that we're under here. In fairness to everybody, you know, Commissioner Gross, well, you do it for one, and do we start bringing in every daycare that's run by every household that might have daycare in their house, should their house become tax exempt, you know? And then, this builds up and builds up and builds up, and that shift goes to everybody else. And I don't know. I'll be interested to hear, and I guess I'm really curious about this questionnaire, if they would have changed their answers, how they might have, is it something different for nonprofits than, or what are the deciding factors on how you would answer the questionnaire?
This is a for-profit business, correct?
Well, my understanding is that they have functioned like a nonprofit over the years in terms of being a, as they term themselves a parent co-op, I guess I would assume that they're just setting the rates to, you know, meet the needs, to pay the staff and provide the service. Obviously, they've got to make enough money to pay the people to work, but, yeah, I don't know that they were intending to. I assume that they were running along the lines of your typical nonprofit. Of course, then again, you know, Mayo is a nonprofit, so.
I don't know quite the outcome of this is going to be, but I also look at, how about all, if they are a nonprofit, not a nonprofit, what about all those years that they've got to, you know, it didn't pay the taxes, you know? So, I mean, are we going to do anything about that? No, we're not, you know? I mean, you're not going back and collecting any back taxes or anything like that. So, I mean, yes, unfortunately, your taxes go up that much, but they probably should have been paying them all along. I don't know about the nonprofit status. If you, a group of parents get together and say, "We're going to form a daycare for our kids," and, okay, now we're nonprofit, and you're still paying people, and you must be doing something, where's the money going to? I mean, if it's a nonprofit, they must be donating their money to something, so.
Well, they're not recognized as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) operation.
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So, with that status, they do meet some of the requirements, but there's still a couple that were questionable. And the ones that the charity board, the review board, found to be questionable were two of them. The institution must be supported by material donations, gifts, or government grants for services to the public in whole or in part, so that was one. And the other one was that material number of the recipients of the charity must receive benefits or services at reduced or no cost, or the organization must provide services to the public that eliminate the burden or responsibility that would otherwise be borne by the government. And those were the two requirements that they did not meet. And there's six that they need to meet.
And that's the part that I have, that I'm not understanding how they didn't meet. I, you know, I had a child that went there when I worked in Barnesville, and so, those two questions that you added, I can, I know that those qualified. I mean, I know that they qualified under that, and so, that's my concern with how maybe a questionnaire was maybe not understood or whatever.
Did they have an opportunity, could they respond to that and request that it be reviewed again if they had a, you know, if they had a chance to respond to the two issues that are there?
No, because the contact person at the Department of Revenue told me what they needed to supply, so I was in conversation with them several times to get all the information, and then that packet was sent, and it was based on that information.
Steve, can we look at this a little bit this week?
Sure.
And either talk to the daycare owner or talk with Barnesville and just kind of get a better understanding as to what?
Okay.
Is it possible we can see Nancy's questionnaire as well?
Yep, I can make a copy of all of that.
Thank you.
I can make it and put it in Queens area. We'll pick it up from there.
Anything else? Mike, anything else?
No, I don't think so. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your willingness to take a look at it.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Nancy. Okay, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve payment of bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Flood update. Gabe.
Good morning. Mr. Chair and Commissioners?
Good morning.
Pass this on. Oops. Sorry, it's in black and white. So, as far as things are looking in the county, last few days, I've been taking a drive around, and our area focus now in Clay County is the Georgetown area. But I just got some preliminary numbers. These are a little bit old now. Last week after the commission meeting, I got some numbers from Highway Department, and last week, their expenses, flood-related expenses, equipment, wages, things like that, they were sitting at about $31,600. And that did not include any contractor costs. They've been relying pretty heavily on contractors to clear ditches. They estimated that last week at about $35,000. I'm sure those numbers have jumped quite significantly because they were, I know they were still pretty busy through the end of last week and then through the weekend before things finally opened up. I talked to Mr. Albright at the Buffalo Watershed District last week, too, and he gave me kind of a preliminary estimate on where they were at with their expenses and contractor costs, and they were estimating about $50,000. As of, that was last Thursday when I spoke to him, so again, I'm sure that number probably jumped over the weekend. City of Morehead, as of last Friday, approximately $114,000. So, add those together, we're at about $230,000 as of last week. So, we're, Clay County's hit the federal threshold. And that's, again, very preliminary and whatnot. Anyways, as last week progressed, our area concern in the county moved up to the Oakport area, Cragness, and Georgetown. We did have some rural farmsteads that were cut off as far as driveways being underwater. Most of those farms up there are ring decked now, so as far as structures were concerned, for the most part, everything was faring pretty well up there. Yesterday, I did head up north to Georgetown, and we assisted a homeowner on the Clay-Norman line getting some water pumps back to his residence. He's got a ring deck around it, but he had an issue with his gatehouse. Other than that, this morning, I did my route into work this morning. I went through Georgetown and Cragness and stuff, and I did notice the water is receding around the Cragness area pretty substantially since yesterday, so that's a good thing. Georgetown was still in that area, the fields are still pretty full, but the city of Georgetown, I've been having, keeping daily contact with them, and they have not plugged any of the holes into their levee system yet, and it looks like they still got, I mean, they could handle a couple more feet before they would need to. But we're kind of looking out on this weather system again. I think it sounds like, if you look at the river predictions, it looks like the Buffalo, they're kind of predicting maybe a slight rise north of Georgetown. The red's holding steady, so that's all good news, and a slight rise really isn't going to affect anything. And then, they don't show up very good in your black and white pictures, but I just wanted to give you an example of what the Highway Department is doing to document damages to roadways and stuff. This is very helpful for me. When I have to compile all this, they have a, you know, estimated amount of material and stuff. So, obviously, when I have to come and replace all the material, it'll make things a lot easier for me. Other than that, I really don't have anything else. Things are, Clay County's been very fortunate. Sounds like Norman right now, I heard this morning, there's an area of Highway 75 between Hendrick and Hollstead that's underwater in Norman County, but they're faring pretty well.
Questions for Gabe?
Good work. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Gabe. Good work.
Are you expecting me back next week if things don't change or most certainly can?
I think we'll leave it up to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right.
Thanks. Our next item, request for approval to fill vacancy for full-time deputy sheriff empty.
Morning, Sheriff. Commissioners?
Morning.
Just like to add two things to Gabe's presentation. Where is he? Gabe, for his first flood and his first time doing this for the four months now, he's been doing a fantastic job. Gabe, thanks for everything you've done so far for this flood. It's been amazing for somebody that's been doing it for four months. And secondly, the Highway Department and Dave and his crew, they've been doing a fantastic job as well. They're out there, they're driving the family roads, they're closing roads before we even know they're going underwater, so they're doing a great job out there. So, Dave, we do appreciate that as well.
It was late night last night. I was loving it, but I'm going to get home.
Yeah. So, we do appreciate it, Dave, and I do appreciate the contact we've had and keep a mean for him.
Morning. As we move forward here, we were noticed by Dave Sunday that his intent to retire here is May 31st of 2019. We're very happy for Dave. Dave's served the county very well for the past 20-plus years, and we hope that he's going to retire after May 31st. I'm requesting to fill that position. He currently has his full-time position in court security. We would like to replace the full-time deputy position for him. We would have to start a current eligibility list. We do not have a current list started, so we'd have to start that process. And then, it would be the normal startup costs for a regular deputy to start, which would be about $6,000 for the uniforms, equipment, and then about $2,000 for the training pay as we move forward.
Okay, questions for the sheriff?
Is that a position where somebody else doing something else in your department right now might have interest in?
Yes. Yep.
So, if that's the case, then you'd be looking at something with backfill?
Yes, we would, what we would do is if somebody did have position or interest in that position, we would, we'd have to post that. That's per their union contract, and then whomever may move into that position, we would have to...
If you did that, we might as well just solve that.
Well, they're not hiring for Dave's position, they're just hiring for another position.
We're just hiring for another full-time deputy position. Correct.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Request for approval to fill vacancy for full-time juvenile counselor position. James. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Sheriff. Commissioners? I'm, through the data, request permission to fill a vacate position in the SCURE unit. It's being vacated by Mike McMullen, who's been with the county for quite a while. Looking at a potential savings of $17,000 between Mike's position and a new hire in that position.
Make a motion to approve with the backfill.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, James. Okay, Darren. Approve benchmark positions and comparable counties for market study. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. Thanks for having me, Commissioners. This shouldn't take too long because we are continuing down the road of our market study, and there's a few things that have to be taken care of prior to that. As you remember, I went to the personnel issues committee and the board on April 2nd to kind of bring you up to speed on where we were on the market study. And then, last Thursday on April 4th, we had a presentation to the managers from Tessa Melvin, who was here the other, in the last week. And so, they are up to speed as well on what's going on. As part of this, we wanted to get board approval for the 40 benchmark positions that we will be submitting to David Drowne Associates. They require that so that they know which ones they're going to be requesting information on. And then, also, the benchmark communities, which there is 18 of those, those are the same ones that we had during the last comp study, except for we added Cass County, North Dakota, and Fargo, North Dakota, as well, to be part of that benchmark community. So, all I'm doing today is requesting approval of these 40 benchmark positions and the 18 benchmark communities. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that even though we're only requesting information for 40 benchmark positions, all the positions will be looked at. There was some confusion in the managers' meeting about, oh, they're only looking at 40, when, why isn't my position on here? They will be looking at all positions, but we use the benchmark positions as kind of the building block for the rest of the positions, so.
Jenny.
Commissioner Whelan and I were in the discussion where we talked about this, and I just want to expand on what you said. These are the 40 that are easily accessible to likewise positions in other communities and counties, and so, that's why these are being benchmarked, and yes, we are looking at everything, but specifically, you know?
Yes.
We have some that are unique to Clay County, and so, that's why it wouldn't make a good benchmark, but benchmarks would typically have, you know, a larger pool to look at for...
Yeah, like, it's like every, you know, every county has deputy sheriffs, every county has social workers, and so, we're trying to get as many of those pricing points as we possibly can. There are a few on this benchmark where we will have to go out in the detox and the juvenile center that they'll have to kind of go out and look and, external to that. But we've already talked to David Drowne Associates, and we've got some ideas on doing those as well, because we don't find, some of these are very difficult to hire for as well, so.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the benchmark positions and also the comparable county-city list.
And I have a document for the chair to sign, so that I can send that to David Drowne.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Okay, annual report from, oh, that's deletions. Annual request to move forward with campus asphalt plan. Joe and Nick. Joe and Nick.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Okay, just kind of kick things off here. Kind of explain what you're looking at. I think a lot of you have seen this drawing put together by the Highway Department here. I know Joe was there last week to discuss the sidewalk upgrades around the courthouse. So what I'm here is just kind of giving you an update on the pricing for the remainder of the upgrades, the asphalt upgrades around the campus, and if there's any questions related to those, so. So a few months back, I was asked to work with the county highway department, Dave Overbow and his team, on some, some upgrades around campus. And they put this nice drawing together for us to kind of price up and review with contractors. One of the big reasons for that is we were doing really well with our contingencies at the time, and there were just some things that we noticed on the, on the design that maybe we want to upgrade some things rather than kind of piecemealing things together in some areas. So, pretty straightforward. So the pricing for the drawing came in at $143,727. And that also includes, in addition to the drawing, we discussed two options at our committee meeting of one based on strictly on the drawings, and then another one, everything included on the drawing, and then upgrading 255 lineal feet of curb and gutter north of the courthouse along 9th Street that's currently called the remain. That's not included on this drawing. So that $143,000 includes that, that portion as well, so. So I don't know if there's any, any questions you guys have.
Questions for Nick?
And my purpose for being here today is just to kind of discuss if you guys had any questions. Steve will still come forward with the formal change order eventually, once we get that put together, and so you guys can motion on that, so.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, I get it, frankly.
If we remove some of these meetings, is there going to be more parking in those areas? Is that kind of, is that parking going to be rearranged at all, or is...
The layout of the parking would be about the same. There are going to be some concrete, I don't know how to kind of point it out here, but they look like little Ts.
Right.
That are there right now by the light poles. Those would go away and just be asphalt, so it'd create a little more room, but you might get a few more parks.
I mean, the parking would be rearranged by taking the meetings up.
No, yeah, we, we talked to Commissioner Gross, we talked with the Highway on that specific question, and asked if removing those two, would we get any more? And they indicated that they wouldn't, would say, would be saving space, but that was more on, easier to maintain and then less, or less to put in the cost.
Kevin?
When we, when we originally looked at our total package, this obviously was not included in, in the gross maximum price with, with construction engineers. However, it was, it was still considered and to be determined to be part of the project, just like the, when we did the front of the courthouse. The parking there was not part of the project, however, we incorporated it in, into our funding mechanism with our bonds, and the same with the front of the Family Service Center. So all along, the intention was, was that this was going to be a, a project cost, just not part of the gross maximum price. Now, because of how, how well we're sitting within our, our contingency dollars, that we're suggesting that we just throw that in and use some contingency dollars to get that done. And it, it still means that there's probably other dollars outside that are still available. So, you know, for when we originally did our bond funding and all that type of thing, it, it kind of goes along with when we, when we did the home buyouts and all those types of things. Those were not part of the construction engineers, but still part of the project, so. I, I think this is a good idea, and I think if we're going to do it, do it right, I think we should include, I think Joe's recommendation was to do that curb and gutter.
Yep.
Get it right now that we've got everything else going.
Yep.
It'll be set for years to come, so.
Yeah, and that, that'll complete everything around campus with this, with all the asphalt.
Yep. So the 143 will take care of the parking, and then Joe, your, your budget will cover the sidewalks.
Yep, around the courthouse, needs around the courthouse.
Are you looking for a motion to?
I don't think I need a motion.
I think that'll just come a little bit later on, the change order.
Yeah. Anything else for these gentlemen? Thank you, guys.
I think that's kind of a thumbs up.
Okay, committee reports. Jenny?
Thank you. Last week I attended the jail ministry event that was held at the Marriott, and boy, they really had a great event with lots of important stories about how their programs in the jail is, have really changed the lives of people. And so I'm thankful that, that we've got them in our community and involved in our correctional It was a good event. I attended MetroCOP last week as well. The executive committee, we talked about the temporary lease that will be, that they signed with the city of Fargo to move the office during the remodeling that will happen. So the end of April is their moving date, so they're in the process of organizing files and putting documents online, or scanning documents and such to move. And then hopefully that will be done by the middle of, and the middle of July, I believe. Other than that, it was just a basic, basic business meeting. And then I attended the Buffalo Red River watershed meeting last night, where we talked about updates JD-1, and also I talked about the contested court decision. And also, I, you know, I, they didn't talk about this last night when I was there, but I just really want to reiterate that my gratitude to the Buffalo Red and the Highway Department and Sheriff's Department for their collaboration with Floodwaters. There was some spots that were backing up, and I noticed their backfill would be in by the end of the day to open up those culverts. And so I, I think that they really helped facilitate kind of the charges opening up to alleviate some flooding for some people, so I appreciate that. And that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
Tuesday of last week, we had our first highway assistant engineer interview. We had one on Tuesday, followed up with four more, I believe it was, on, on Thursday. And I think of those, we've had some good candidates, and I think there's some, I think there's some background checks going on now, I think, and we should maybe be hearing something soon. On Thursday the 4th, I attended the Clay County Joint Powers meeting, and we had a presentation from Shelley Carlson on ageism. And I think it kind of coincides with, you know, some of the things that we hear from our demographers even, regarding, you know, the retiring baby boomers, and how significant they can still play in our, the needs of our communities and the workforce. You know, so it was, it was a good presentation. I think there's going to be more discussion regarding those, that topic and like topics in the near future. Then on, last night, oh, excuse me, yesterday afternoon, we had a chair's meeting with the diversion authority and went over several things in regard, in regards to upcoming meetings with different agencies and groups. And I'm going to make very little comment on this, other than I attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed Board last night. That's into my report.
Frank? Didn't have any scheduled meetings, but the events I attended, where the interviews, I was involved with the assistant county engineer. We had that on Tuesday and Thursday. Commissioner Mojo set the jail ministry Tuesday night. I'm just surprised, that's, well, glad, of all, there's 250 people there. I mean, the number of people that are involved in this jail ministry now, it's just, it's just grown, and it's just, it's just amazing to see that, you know? Sometimes you think, well, what are they doing at the correction center, you know, stuff like that? I mean, yes, there's people coming in there weekly and doing things like that, you know, but the support that they have for that is tremendous, you know? It was just great to see. Wednesday, I went to Veterans Court, where another, they had another graduation at Veterans Court. And there, again, you know, you look at, is that Veterans Court, is that a good thing? Well, you kept one guy out of jail, and he's as happy as can be. The man turned himself completely around, you know, and, excuse me. And it just saved us a whole bunch of money, you know? Yes, Veterans Court costs us a little bit of money, but I think we probably saved more money. So it was really, that was good. And last night, I went to the, the Sheriff's Department had a, or peace officers group, I guess, had a spaghetti pizza at the Dill Community Center, and I attended that. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chairman?
If I can follow up, the previous week, I had reported on a trip that myself and
the diversion authority board chair and some others made to Minneapolis for the district court hearing regarding the diversion and our motion to either lift or relieve the injunction of the construction projects that we wanted to do on the North Dakota side. And, and yesterday, that decision came out, and all of our, every one of our requests to have lifted have been lifted. So construction on the inlet structure, the wild rice control structure, and the western tieback can all proceed. And also in the hearing that, during the decision, it also allowed for certain things to take place in regards to soil borings and those types of things associated with the need to get additional information on the Minnesota side as well. So it was fantastic news on the front to move this project forward. And I want to thank Judge Tunine for his quick response. And I, if, you know, this, this is out there for people to read, and clearly the DNR was in support, complete support of our requests. You know, their, their, their only concern was that it, it still needed to follow, we still needed to follow the conditions of the permit, even though the permit is in abeyance right now while a contested case goes forward. And we assured the, the judge, and we have every intention to abide by those 54 conditions. We've said all along we would do that, and the, the DNR was very supportive, as well as the Corps of Engineers. So of the, of the parties involved in that, in that process, three of the four of them came to the decision that moving forward with those items was the correct thing to do.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, I attended the City of Moorhead planning meeting, and the Planning Commission approved the final plat for Oakport Holdings for the preserve on Broadway. And we approved a request for a conditional use permit for allowing development in the flood fringe for the 1/4th Street South project of Epic Holdings, which is right between the treetop and the river, that section of land just across the tracks from Country Greenery. And that is an exciting project that has made a major hurdle, so. And then on Thursday, I attended the Joint Powers meeting that Commissioner Campbell spoke about, the presentation on ageism by Moorhead City Council member Shelley Carlson. Then later Thursday afternoon, I attended the Governance Board of the Clay County Collaborative. We reviewed the 2019 budget, and we had questions arising from the director's salary and benefits package. And then on Monday, yesterday, along with the other commissioners, there are four out of five, I attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed District meeting in Barnesville and regarding the contested case hearing. And that's enough said about that. And that's my report.
Thank you. I also attended the Jail Chaplains event last week, and at the Marriott, it was a great event. It seems to grow every year, and the Marriott was full, so that's a good thing. I'm sure the end result will be good for the Chaplains group. Let's see, I had a Heartland Trail meeting in Osage last week, and that's, we have kind of been in a stance, though, but we're going to collaborate with some of the other groups, other counties, to try and get some bonding money next year when it's a bonding year for, for the trail project. So I think there's got some possibilities there, hopefully. And then I also attended the Buffalo Red meeting last night, and that, there's probably a lot that should be said about that, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, the Buffalo Red Board voted to continue their contested case against the DNR and essentially the diversion authority and Clay County. And I think the public should be aware of that, that they're going to be spending, you know, the majority of their funding comes from Clay County, and they're going to be using Clay County citizens' money to essentially sue the DNR and, and Clay County to accomplish what they see as their end, so. Anyway, I'm sure we'll have more discussions about that in the future, so. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week after board, I met with two citizens in regards to some concerns they had. That evening, I participated in the jail ministries fundraiser, got the opportunity to see firsthand at the juvenile facility the good work that they do with, with our youth. I think one of the things they noted, they'll be looking for probably a name change in the, in the next year, that the jail portion will be, will be going away, and we'll have something that reflects more our correctional values of our new facility. On, on Wednesday, I participated in a phone conference with Shelley Eldridge and Lori in, in talking about our bond position as a county overall. And that, that afternoon, I met with Commissioner Gross at the Veterans Court. Again, fun to hear the stories and the success that, that are impacting some of our citizens. I participated on, on Thursday at the Joint Powers, and it's been addressed on ageism. And one of the things that did come forward from the City of Moorhead was a request to combine our Joint Powers and our Community Facilities Task Force. And so I did want to bring that forward here for, for some discussion.
That's it?
I don't know if there's any...
If you want discussion, I'll discuss, I guess. So the reason, the Joint Powers is a different, you know, you meet in the morning and kind of update random things that are going on, and you have presentations on ageism, and it's kind of a continued dialogue. The reason we created the Community Facilities Task Force is because when we were looking at our construction projects, and the City of Moorhead was looking at their construction projects, it was an opportunity, we had a meeting with all the boards from the City of Moorhead, the Moorhead Schools, and Clay County. We were all present. And then we decided to have this group that would need to intricately discuss how these construction projects could affect levees, make sure we staggered them so they weren't not hitting the taxpayers at the same time, and kind of collaborating. And I think their road project over by either Horizon or Dodds has kind of been identified, and so we talked about that at that point. And so it was really almost a work group between the three different entities. And I, I think it serves its purpose being separate from the Joint Powers. I do know in the past year or two, it's just, it's been difficult in terms of scheduling so that we haven't maybe met as regularly or had the items on the agenda that would maybe be important, but not important, but as important as originally when we created those, those groups. And so I, I sincerely think specifically, since I saw that Moorhead voted, the schools voted to go ahead with the Sam's Club building, and, and possibly has a large referendum on the ballot for this fall. I think it, I think it is a group that serves its purpose if we let it, but I don't know.
I, I brought that up, and I brought that up that morning, and... I brought that up, and I brought that up that morning, and, you know, I think, you know, some of them were of the opinion that those issues could still be discussed, it's the same entity as that this other one. I agree, I agree with you, Jenny, that, you know, I think that, I think the taxpayers like the fact that we communicate regarding large projects and how it impacts them as taxpayers. And this, the Clay County Collaborative or Joint Powers Board is meant to collaborate as well. A lot of those areas that we collaborate on have to do with, I think, more of how we can avoid duplicating services and those types of things, as opposed to when it comes to things outside of the services that we provide, and how that impacts our taxpayers. And, you know, I personally think, I'd still like to see that committee, and you know what, if there's nothing going on, don't meet. You know, but when the next big issue comes up, when there's a referendum about to go out, whether it's the DGF schools, or whether it's some more public schools, and a referendum on a high school, then it's good for everybody to be talking together on that, and understanding what project we all want to work on and get done, and how it's going to impact the taxpayer.
And I guess with that, if other entities don't see that it's as, something that's as needed as maybe Commissioner Campbell and I do, but I just, I really feel like we, it was very helpful to have those discussions and know what was coming up, so that we weren't overburdening taxpayers with the larger things that were coming up.
That was, that committee was actually the result of when we actually met as the all entities combined at the Income Center. And I remember this day, it was Councilmember Gertz who even suggested that we put this together as a good way to make sure that we understand. If recall, that was back when we were looking at doing these jail projects, and the sales tax was a discussion. And through that process, it all, it lent its way to a good communication amongst everybody and what should be supported and what way. You know, we're limited, we're limited in these Joint Powers meetings. We show up at 7:00 in the morning, and many of the people that are in those meetings have to report to their own duties by 8:00. And so you're kind of got time restrictions on the clock, and, you know, when you're talking about these facilities, if it takes two hours of conversation, you should take two hours to talk about it. So I'm with Commissioner Mojo on this. You know, I think it was suggested by Brandon and Christine Volkers from the city, you know, that we incorporate the two. We're just sharing, you know, I think those two entities are suggesting we combine them. I don't know what we're going to go with it.
Well, it looks like I have a pretty clear answer. Our position is, we would like to continue.
Yeah, I think it's important, and maybe really the message that if there's not anything going on, you know, you don't need to meet. But certainly, I think in the height of when everything was being planned, we were meeting maybe every couple of months, and so now it's gone to once every, twice a year.
Yeah, that's correct.
I guess what's the hurt in just keeping it together?
Sure. All right.
Steve, anything else?
I did have a few other things, just wanted to pass along. Later Thursday, participating in Strive for Excellence, I think just for our employees, throw a shout out there, we're looking to have our EAC Committee, that is facing challenges that run all of our different events on campus, Darren is struggling to find volunteers for that, and so if you have that, I guess, need to help on the campus, we certainly are looking for volunteers. We also spoke on the upcoming management retreat at the end of the month. We had county management, Darren mentioned, we had Tessa Melvin from David Drawns. We would encourage our employees to look at the, when Tessa was here at the board, to update if they have questions about the process. Afternoon, I had met with the Assistant County Engineer Interviews. And again, I think there'll be a decision coming up later this week, hopefully, on that selection, again, terrific candidates. On the 5th, we participated in a phone conference with Darren in preparations with AMC. They should have an agenda down for upcoming management retreats soon, and I'll forward that out to you all as soon as I get that. On Friday, I also had a phone conversation with County Attorney Ryan Melton. Again, he wanted to pass along to his board his appreciation for your continued support of his deployment, and also to his staff who have been holding down the area while he's been gone. He is anticipating, hopefully, being back by mid-August, and we're going to touch base again in May, just to make sure the plans haven't changed. Again, just want to touch on a few things we mentioned last week. On Thursday of this week, Clay County is participating on April 8 through 12th in Minnesota's Fair Weather Awareness. On April, this Thursday, April 11th, we'll be having a fire drill at 10:00 a.m., statewide tornado drill, 145, and we'll be conducting a lockdown drill at 3:30. So everyone's aware of that. I did have a handout, just to follow up, from the questions from Reed Albright from the DNR, they each have a packet. Commissioner Gross had questions about the pilts, that information is in the first packet. Commissioner Gross had questions about the gauges on the rivers, that's in the second piece. And Commissioner Haney had questions about Trump Stream, and that also has information there. It appears the darn beavers are screwing a lot of things up. So that, you can follow up with me on any questions there. The other thing is, last Friday, I received a call from Jim Stewart from Artson Stewart and Wagner. They represent Eventide. And they are, they are looking at doing some renovations and an additional 70-bed unit on their property on 1405 A Street South in Moorhead, just south of Concordia. The total cost of the project is roughly $18 million. They are looking to the county to provide support in issuing bonds for them. We, as a county, only have the ability to issue, the bonds dollars are looking for have to be bank qualified bond dollars. County only has the ability to provide $10 million in bonds. To this point, this year, we've had some initial discussions, at least with the Buffalo Red, roughly $1.8 million, which would leave us about $8 million. And so the request before the board today is whether or not this would be something you would like to consider and have representatives from Eventide and Artson Stewart and Wagner come forward to have.
Yeah, since we've got the $10 million, I think it'll be fine to have them come and talk to us about it.
It's a beneficial project to Clay County.
It is, yeah, sure.
And I believe that concludes, oh, and just a reminder, we do have our city and county meetings coming up, if you can have any agenda items they'd like to add to that, I'll be sending that out.
Anything else? Colleen, anything for us? Or your turn?